You better go out there and... Donnie and... Control the parking lot. It's a massive problem we have here.
See, you do have it.
Yeah, I brought my craft pistol with me.
Yeah, there she is.
Should've had this done earlier with my study.
You can leave. I don't think you're gonna need the riot baton tonight.
I hope not. We'll just stick 'em out in the rain.
Yeah, they say we're gonna get it tonight.
Yeah, that's what they're saying. Just push 'em out there to let 'em blow away.
Cut yourself short.
That's what I say.
Thank you.
Get you. Damn, you would be.
It's light reading.
She saw a car just like Ruthie's turning on the road up there while I went. I thought, "She's running?" Then I went, "No," he kept on going.
Hi, Betty.
Hello, Betty, how are you?
I made it.
How you doing?
Well, I'm surviving. I'm still here. I thought you were rid of me.
Haven't seen you in a while.
You're not rid of me yet.
Did you get your computer real print? I didn't look at it for you.
Get prints doesn't come with you. Put me on the... On the budget stuff.
Flip, how you doing?
Pretty good.
Flip, how you doing? Well, they laid in new reading material down here. We're trying to catch up on it.
Okay. Gotta have some spies, guys, to catch up.
Yeah. As long as I'm reading, it takes a while.
Hello, how are you?
I don't.
Like they say, getting up here and reading.
Try it.
Just playing. Several hundred...
Oh, well, that'll be tomorrow then.
Oh, there it is. What is TCLDS?
That's a police, like, it's like the old TCLOS, I think. Police chief? Donnie Malone?
Yes.
What's TCLDS or whatever they put? It's like TCLOS or something. What is that?
TCLOS, that's one of the programs that we use through TCLOS. It's how we get in and do the L1s.
Well, they showed me nothing to do than subscriptions, and I didn't remember seeing that before.
Right.
Ain't nobody in this police, or?
I thought exactly.
So this is gonna be a quick meeting tonight?
It shouldn't be too long. Do you have something you wanna bring up tonight?
Oh, no. I was just hoping I could be home before this.
Oh, okay. We'll let you stay first.
Try to start patrolling the roads to see if the drainage ditches were all working okay. Commissioner's job.
I think we had the county over here mowing roads today.
Uh, that's where they were supposed to be. I wanted everyone to have a nice-looking county road ditch for Memorial Day weekend. Not to be confused with the runoff election.
I think what he was saying, "Can we hurry up?"
Yeah, they held us for the draft, didn't they, Mr. Rutherford?
Yes, they did. But they didn't know we had the smartphone up for the once and ever pick, did they?
Okay, looks like it's six o'clock. Call meeting to order. Andrew, would you like to do a vote call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Ray Whitman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pandros?
Here.
Council members Phil Rutley?
Here.
Donald Weaver?
Here.
Ruthie Seabird?
Here.
And Adam Gonzalez?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. So, let's go to the consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items three, four, and five?
I'll make a motion that we approve those.
Do I have a second to that? I will second that. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent item. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to open four. Have anybody in the audience that'd like to address the city council? Nobody. Okay. We'll move on. Item seven?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the budget workshop minutes?
Yes.
Number five, did you all include that?
Yes, three, four, and five.
We have three of those under the consent. Oh, that, you included five as a consent? I'm sorry.
Yeah, three, four, and five.
Okay.
Okay, item seven, consider an act upon grant for litter abatement officer. I'm not sure if we wanna get into that. Donnie, did you wanna make a comment on that?
Not at this time.
Okay. I think there was something put in your package addressing the litter abatement officer. The officer would be strictly for litter abatement, and we wouldn't be able to use him for anything else. And it is, if I'm not, if I'm correct, Chris, is that a full-time position?
It can be full or part-time layer. They said they'll pay $30,000 the first year, $20,000 the second year, $10,000 the third year, but the fourth year it has to be in your budget.
Yeah.
And of course, on a part-time, they said they'd do 15, 10, 5, and then the fourth year it has to be in your budget.
What made you look into this in the first place?
We got an email from the COG. We get emails from the COG when the grants are coming up, and the lady said it won't be till August. So I showed it to the mayor, and that's been it.
Yeah, we're not supposed to take your spend for it.
Yeah. Do you just wanna table that? I have a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table that.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, let's table it. All right, item eight, consider an act upon ordinance for a sales tax election of one-fourth of one percent to provide revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. I think Eric Paul already had a copy of that in the package.
Was that quarter percent designated for anything in particular?
Yes, for the streets. Which would include your right-of-way, the right-of-way isn't there? Ditches, anything thing to streets and right-of-way.
I'm not so sure that I'm still happy about pushing this forward. It is an extra tax on the people that we did talk about not, but when we represented ourselves, I did, Ron Edford, as another tax, type of a tax. I, I'm disappointed that we didn't do anything more with our road money this year than we have, and if we're gonna get more money, then, you know, I don't know.
I think part of the reason we didn't spend the money, open the street with them, I know from my standpoint, we'd have a big issue coming along with the washout or like the Marson Street deal in Frankston, where you gotta, you're spending several dollars, but...
Well, we...
I mean, to me, we're not approving a tax. We're approving the, for the citizens to make their choice. And that's, I mean...
I realize that. I feel like the citizens have already told me that they'll do a tax.
This would be the opportunity to say yea or nay.
Well, with things going on, if they are, you know, we, I had voted for it before, but I'm not so sure I'm voting for it now either. I just, I think we should just put this way until sometime later.
Do I have some kind of a motion?
What, how much of, how much revenue did you think that was gonna bring in?
I think we figured it at one time, about $30,000 a year. No. No. Close to that.
A quarter percent.
It was half of the EDC money that we were getting. Do we have an EDC report?
They're normally getting about $5,000 a year, nine a month, so that would be $2,500.
Maybe it was. Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be in the $30,000 area.
I guess my thoughts on that, on the sales tax, most of the sales tax are not being spent by people of Coffee City. They're being spent by people driving through or coming, still coming from Tyler while they are. And so it's not that big a tax on the city if it gets somebody's street fixed where, where they have a better, like, get in and out of their driveway.
And need working on those streets.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, you know, how I vote on it when it comes up for, if we do this on the election, this is my own personal business, so, and I guarantee, I know how I'm gonna vote.
I'm happy to leave it up to the people, I guess, but I'm...
That's my only point. I, I've been accused of saying I would raise the taxes. I have not said that at all. I'm against it, against any tax increases, especially if I think it's against the people of Coffee City itself. Most of this, to me, is outside of Coffee City. I guarantee you the people of Coffee, if the people of Coffee City are buying all the liquor for Fat Dog, Donnie ain't working enough. So, I don't know.
Well, do I have a motion that we place this on the ballot?
I would make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Do I have a motion and a second to place this on the ballot for the November election? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two, all against? Two against?
Oh, abstain. I'll have to abstain.
You're abstaining, okay. We're a tie vote. I think in that case I'd like to vote, because it's a tie vote. So I'll vote to go ahead and have it placed on the ballot. I'll vote yes on that. Okay, let's move on to last. I think we have a letter, I could put in your package, from John Furlow, the auditor that did our audit this past year, and he did an excellent job on it. He, for some reason, has something else coming up that he's not gonna be able to do our audit for this fiscal year.
This was his referral?
Yes, so he's referring a friend of his out of Henderson, and we need to get together with him and meet him and decide if we want, if we wanna go ahead and go with him. I don't think John Furlow would have recommended him, if he didn't think he would be a very good job.
Yeah, he had on the cost, so...
I don't think it's gonna be more than what we paid. It might be less, because John Furlow, when he did our audit, he had to do two years. And the audit now, this is gonna have to be done, will just have to be done for one year. And it's not gonna be as much due as it was, because we have our bookkeeping here, it's pretty good.
So have you got any plans of contacting Mr. Richard Lapp? I'll have to call out.
And if you want to invite him to the city council meeting, or maybe just a couple of us, invite him to talk and present that to the council.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Just to meet him first. I'll see if I can get in touch with him. If he wants to have somebody go with me, and we'll, we'll go meet. Okay. Consider an act upon disposition of CD to the materials. Our auditor suggested that we designate a portion of that as our emergency fund. I think he said 15%.
Right.
So that would work out to be, I think, the 35,000 or something like that.
36,000.
36,000.
35,95, I believe that.
Okay. Should we set aside $40,000 as reserve for emergencies, and then just have the rest of it for regular CD?
I'd say that's, that's good for me.
Any other suggestions on that?
That's fine, that's a good idea.
All right, we'll put $40,000 in for emergency designation, and then the rest of it will just be a regular CD.
Because if the budget changes a little bit, that'll give you...
So we'll have to go with it.
Well, actually, if the budget changes, probably it's expensive that you wanna go out, so... But in all actuality, any type of emergency the city has, we can still get in the revenue's interest, but we can still...
Yeah, you can still get it. Should we go ahead and do the CDs for one year again?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that question. For how long can we renew them?
I would get a better rate if they're one year, which is not a whole lot, but...
Well, I would do at least one year.
Yeah. Let's do one year then.
I mean, if the interest rates you're getting now, even if you pull it out, it'll be $10, so...
So true.
Okay, item...
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, do we have a motion from somebody?
I would make a motion that we reserve $40,000 off of emergency fund out of the existing CD.
Okay, and the balance of it just in a regular CD.
Johnson, a regular one-year CD. Second, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, consider an act upon lending money to the fire department for a note that's past due at the bank. They should be getting their money next week, but in interim, I think, to get the bank off of it, like we did last year, we made a payment form last year, so the money from the county was slow.
When does that actually due? Is it past due at this point?
I thought it was first May, maybe it only was still in April. We were supposed to change it last year to May, but...
It's in April.
It was in April.
Okay.
So what kind of interest do we get from the fire department?
About 15%.
You're firing.
Are you paying late interest?
I'll give you three free nights.
Is he being penalized interest each month?
Yeah, but that's with the penalty, but he'll probably drop the penalty when, if y'all approve it, I'll call him, and it'll probably go down to $125.
Well, I have some issues with my fire department tonight, because I feel like you should've had your county money already, and I am having a hard time, you know, we keep approving money for you. And I've asked to see figures from you, which we got tonight, so I would like time to look those over. We need a fire department, we need a good fire department, we need your equipment to pay for it. I understand all of that, but I personally feel like you have been not keeping your eye on the ball with getting your money. We did the same thing last year.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know why. I mean, I understand about the NIMS, but all the other fire departments in Henderson County...
I agree. I agree.
So I'm just saying, I would like a little bit more financial responsibility coming out of fire department.
When, I mean, two weeks ago, or at the last meeting, you said you expected the money within two weeks?
That's when we found out that there was a NIMS problem, and then I've got the stuff from DPS, and I've sent an email off, and I'm gonna give Mr. Commissioner Geese a hand copy tonight, too, where they've said that we've done what we're supposed to have done.
So everything is now approved?
That's what Nancy Cornelius at DPS says, so, no, it's still gotta go to Commissioner's Court. Commissioner's Court's still gotta say yes, and...
What I understood is that the fire marshal in Athens is the one who gets this paperwork from the various fire departments, and once they get that all turned in, then the fire marshal goes to the Commissioner's Court and asks for them to go ahead and allocate this money. So does the fire marshal in Athens have all your paperwork?
Yes, he should have this copy also.
You think it's turned in to him now?
Well, I'm hoping. I haven't called him today, but I will call him first thing in the morning and verify.
I mean, I'd be calling him every day to see if he had it.
Well, I, I didn't call, well, yes, ma'am. I was calling people every day on some other deals to get it done, and then... But I agree with you.
I guess the question, if we don't make this authorized, what kind of penalties and interest are we looking at going forward?
Never mind, we don't wanna have to...
Go get the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand you're...
I'm overpaying it. I know it needs to be paid, but I just want it noted that I'm not going... Do you happy that we have to do this again this year?
This is the last final thing.
Do you have a secretary to help you out?
I've got some now, and I've, even the mayor Pro Tem has offered to help me if I lose sight again. Sometimes it's, we had a discussion, and, you know, it's a focus deal. It's a, get tunnel vision on one deal and the other deal's side, and...
Well done.
I'll make a motion, we can get on and pay the note. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, that's, this is the final thing on that, so that shouldn't be an issue anymore. All right, item 12, consider an act upon approving budget for 2014, 2015 fiscal year. We might just recommend some minor changes to it, and then...
Well, they, they're one of the things that, for those that weren't here, last time, we had a budget workshop Thursday night last week, and as we went through line by line, item of our, of our, basically, bad glowing houses, we got to one line that I said, "Why don't we skip that and come back to it?" Which was salaries. And by the time we were done with everything else, we forgot, or I forgot. I called Ray and said, "Hey, we need to, that needs to be put back on the discussion, because that's not fair."
All right, on the salaries, I would recommend that we do a 3% salary increase for all three of our employees.
I would say, as of the budget workshop at the end of, we actually had a little over $6,000 in reserve and profits that was left over. The, after talking to Ray, he said that, and I calculated, it would cost us $2,526 to do that for a year.
That's a 25%...
That's, that's, right. And that's, that's taking salaries and payroll taxes into consideration, so... 2340, 186 there.
Do I have a motion on that? For salary increase?
I'll make a motion that we...
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of a 3% salary increase?
Starting January 1st.
I mean, to July 1st.
July 1st.
July, January 1st.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other changes that you can see that we need to make on the budget?
Well, I know Pam had sent me a text about, you know, one of them, about spreading the payroll taxes like we did the salary and stuff from, for city and then for police and court, so you can kinda track better the cost for each group, which it's, we have 6,200 total, and we come back to 2,000 for city and 4,200 for police and court in the payroll tax section.
And the same for liability, right?
And, oh, yeah.
Or you, maybe you've already done that.
I think I did that on the sheet that I asked Angela to do for y'all, that's in the package. The other night during the budget workshop, she also asked about the liability spreading yet, and we got those numbers Friday morning, and so I went ahead and put them in there when we sent the document back over. So those are already spread. Should be the second page right here of that. I thought they had one in your package. I've got, I'll say I've got an extra one. Okay, so, other than that, I didn't, after going back and, I went back and rechecked, ever calculation, there were sums, there were plus-minus, just to make sure I hadn't, didn't have a bad form of them there somewhere. I didn't find one, so, I feel that's always one of my great failures.
But I'd like to commit, you don't wanna work it so bad.
Pam did more of it than I did.
You and Pam did a lot of work there.
Okay, on the rules, though, are we still gonna just leave it at 25?
We don't know how the election will come on, that's what it'll turn out, so we can always, if the election goes in favor of that additional funding, then we can, we can just vote to spend that money as we collect.
But the bottom line of the change that we just made on salary increases, what's the bottom?
I've got that number. The city will change to 25,750 under salaries? And the court and police will change to 54,590?
In the total?
$80,340. You testing me?
No, no, I'm talking about what's the net, the net after you take that out. We, you're showing we have 6,160.
It'll take, it'll take out the 25, 26, Pam, so you can write that off the bottom.
I thought maybe you had that pencil down. I'll be having to do the math.
Well, no, 'cause I didn't, I did not change any numbers in the budget till, till this evening. I mean, I will update this, it'll be...
That leaves us $3,640, is that right?
Wednesday or Thursday before I hit back, I'm gonna down that table.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to forego approving the budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015.
I would, I would suggest we wait till the next, till the June meeting once, and just in case something arises, that, it comes up. I also suggest we use what's left in our road money this month, or next month, for this year's budget, so...
Okay, so we're just foregoing the item 12 until next month.
So I will update this and send this back to Angela for her, make a copy.
And you said all the, using the remaining money on the rules we have, are we adding new interlocal agreement in the county?
I think that's our existing one, so we had some funds that we didn't spend.
On the interlocal?
No, no.
Your funds you're talking about.
Yeah, he's talking about the city budget. The one the city had budgeted that had been spent.
You haven't used anything against 2014, 2015.
So we still have that?
You have $20,000 total.
Plus...
That's just for next year, for 2014, 2015.
Well, and we can use it, I mean, we could use it now, because it came in March, correct? We got it in March, so we...
How much did, did we lose? We lost what we didn't use from last week?
We did everything.
We didn't use, we didn't lose any of the interlocal money.
What we're talking about is in the budget, there's still like $2,700 left that we didn't spend that I would like to see that.
We used it all.
You used it all. I didn't use it, I didn't. I was speaking in general terms, and it was all consumed.
Okay, item 13, mayor's report. Our police department just recently went through a protection department, public safety audit, and I wanted to bring that up, because there are very few police departments that go through one of these audits without getting some kind of gig. His, his audit came through without any deficiencies. No areas of non-compliance were found. And what they look at is they look at the access to criminal history, record information, they look at use of criminal history, record information, they look at destruction of criminal history, record information, and they found everything was in compliance. Now, Donnie, weren't there other areas they looked at, too, in addition to the these?
Yes, sir, one of the other areas they look at is the way I keep the personnel files. I keep them exactly like DPS wants me to keep them, like, like they have instructions of how they want it, and that's, that's how I keep them.
Well, I think our police chief is doing an excellent job for the city, and I think he needs a round of applause for giving that. Okay, that's all I have for that. Oh, I have one other thing here for the city council people, and anyone in the audience that would like to attend. Greater Lake Palestine Committee is having a meeting on Thursday, May 29th, at the Chandler Community Center at 7:00 PM, and the guest speaker is gonna be Randy Holtman. He's a test... And the guest speaker is gonna be a Randy Holtman. He's a test, district engineer for Techstock. And he's gonna be talking about roads and bridges surrounding Lake Palestine in the four county areas, Anderson, Cherokee, Henderson, and Smith. Now, he will not be addressing city streets, uh, or county roads, except where a state road passes through the city. But anyway, supposedly this is gonna be a very informative, uh, meeting, so any of you that, uh, can foreit in to go, I would, I would suggest that you go. Okay, E D C report. Ron?
Well, now, I'm gonna make part of that report. Uh, I did talk with Shalina and I, I have not seen the pressure report, so I believe she's gonna have that part of it.
Okay.
But, uh, Pam wanted an update on the kitchen pantry with the community center. We, we started out last year talking about tables and chairs. And then it evolved into maybe we could do something beyond tables and chairs. Uh, like finish up the kitchen and the pantry. In the December meeting, that's where primarily the, the discussion went to. At that time, Bruce Harbor said that he would just kind of be the go point or the center point of getting something like that put together. Uh, Don Weaver said that he would like to work with him on that. In January, I ran into, uh, Bruce up here at City Hall and told him, I said, if you guys run into anything or some point in time I can be of, be of help, let me know. And he said, okay, so he called me up, uh, probably a couple of weeks later, we got with the Lowe's people to, with their design. I think he and Don actually met, took the engineered floor plans, kind of put it in a more simple, simplistic manner. Took it and, and then, uh, we went up to Lowe's, uh, Bruce and I did. In the March meeting, E D C meeting, uh, Bruce did present the plans, the layout, in fact, all of the cost involved from Lowe's standpoint. There was discussion about, uh, we probably ought to have runs some ads for advert, for advertising for contractors to come in, bid on it and things of that nature. There were questions about, well, what did we feel like the estimated cost would be? I wanna say Bruce said his was twenty-thirty, thirty-two thousand. Don's was, I believe, about thirty-nine, was a little bit higher than that. But Bruce did make a comment that his estimate also did include the tables and chairs that he'd located at Sam's. And, and the March meeting was one of the longest meetings I've ever attended at the E D C. Because we also had a presentation earlier that evening. Just before we adjourned, uh, Don made a motion that we move forwards. And that was, that was it, just that we moved forward. And I think, left my notes in home. I think Bruce seconded, anyway, it did pass, so move forward. But since then, Bruce has resigned from the E D C, so I don't know, that's where we're standing right now.
So we have got any ears in the paper?
We don't have anything. Like I say, uh, it, the, it really wasn't a committee, it was just primarily Bruce and then Don. Back in December says, hey, we'll, we'll work on it. And then I just told Bruce, uh, sometime in January and.
Do we have any kind of bidable plans?
Sure.
Do we have any bidable plans, plans that could be placed out to bid?
More or less. In fact, Don, Bruce and I met, I believe, after the, uh, March meeting. Because I was gonna draw up some, a, draw to scale plan just to do an electrical layout, electrical on. I had gone over to the, uh, community center. The bathroom, shower, and utility room as they exist over there are not exactly according to the engineered plans. There are beams that you have to actually frame around and work within. And the way the engineers drew it up, that's not the way it's finished up over there. And it's, and it's a darn good thing that it's not, because to try to framework, in essence, to ask your question. The three of us had discussed, Bruce, Don, and I discussed, basically, when we did advertise, we would just have to, have to go over there with anybody that wanted to bid on it. And be there and say, okay, when it comes to framing this one particular wall, let's go over here and look at these so that you can get an idea of how it can be framed out.
Uh, can I, can I meet with you one day this week?
Yes, sir.
Go over that.
Okay.
Did y'all get drawings or anything from Lowe's? I know with their design center, a lot of cases, they can.
Bruce, Bruce went to Lowe's and had a presentation and he was under the impression they were gonna give him a draftable thing. Basically, they gave him a sales presentation with, here's the appliances if you buy Lowe's, and here's a picture of how they'll look. And if you buy the cabinets, here's how they'll look. But that's about as far as it went. And Bruce, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, he had asked to be in charge of it. He said, I wanna be in charge of this project. And so, congratulations, Bruce, you're in charge. And so I was asked to attend the meetings to get my input and then also Ron was tasked to answer.
I mean, there's a lot of good contractors out there that you can do the basic things and they.
I think it's a lot more, we're making it a little bit more complicated than it needs to be.
I absolutely agree.
Because you could, you could have a contractor meeting, drag those people in there, you already have the existing bathrooms and anybody that knows anything about steel buildings, the points that, uh, Ron brought, brought out are perfectly clear. But all you have to do is just frame around, you have, you have wire supports to support the pre-plant buildings that they put up. And of course, you can't touch those, those have to be put along, so you have the back.
Buildings are built every day with building, with, with walls put on the inside of them.
But it's just be a matter of, of inviting the contractors in, go, you see how they did it over there? That's how we want it.
Is this matter on the new, on the next E D C meeting?
Not that I know of.
When is the next E D C meeting?
I don't know.
It's supposed to be quarterly in the.
See, and everybody's like this, and I think that is totally ridiculous. I think E D C, and I've, I've asked for this before, I think E D C needs to have a quarterly meeting. I don't care if you'll have anything to talk about or not, get together and decide if you're gonna talk about something or not, if you're gonna finish the kitchen or not.
Where is, who is gonna make that decision?
Well, I think as the council, we're telling you as an E D C.
We, we have three E D C members present. No, we have four, we have four present.
That should come from the president of the E D C.
The mayor needs to.
Larry Paxton needs to.
He's the president, but as the council, we are the ones that tells the E D C yea or nay on things, correct? If you have a president that's supposed to be running it and we've asked the president to have quarterly meetings.
So I suggest we set up a meeting with Mr. Paxton again.
But I'm sorry, I'm getting crazy on this, but I won't be, we'll start doing their damn jobs, you know?
I understand. We, we would like, we would like to have some direction in that as well.
Well, then get on the ball and make it happen. You're a member, you're a member, you're a member. Why can't y'all make that happen?
He's a member, he's a member.
You're a member, make it happen.
Well, I, I'm a member, but it was, uh, it was, uh, I think it's the chain of command that we're choking on.
There was a lot of passion and motivation to, to handle this project.
The other thing is, it's the president of the E D C that, it's the president of the E D C that calls the meetings. And so now he just calls them when he wants to? If there's something to be discussed or not, that's not right. There needs to be a quarterly meeting and somebody.
Well, I also, I also think that whenever Bruce Harbor, as, as Don pointed out, he was heading this thing up. When he resigned, that was it.
The ball was dropped.
Well, you gotta understand too, the president of the E D C has his own facility to feed and ha, and put people up over his place. I mean, he's got a restaurant, he's got a, a, a community or an area to have meetings.
So what does that have to do with them opening their meetings?
What is his, or what is his reason to try to get us as a competitor?
I don't know if that's an issue.
Well, I'm not sure it is, but it's, I mean, it's.
But that's, that's a very clever point.
He's the president of the E D C more every, the whole meeting.
You have more meetings than what's.
Yeah, we.
He needs to hold them once a quarter, I don't care.
Which would be moving forward.
If Ruthie was the president, then she needs to be the one that holds it every quarter.
Are we voting on Ruthie?
Oh, that's all.
I have no idea if he's the president, I think.
I know, I know, I know.
Mayor.
Yes.
Since Don and I both have been involved in that, if when you and I meet.
Yeah.
Would, uh, Don, would Don be a better break?
Oh, yeah.
All right, okay, municipal report.
Do you want the financials for the E D C?
Oh, free, yeah, I'm sorry.
These, these are March financials.
Yeah.
Because they weren't ready at the last meeting.
Okay.
So, the March E D C finance report, uh, the general count had a beginning balance of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. We have the sales tax deposit of four thousand, four hundred and two dollars and thirty cents. We had one disbursement to the city of Coffee City and that was for, I think Pam did the work on that, uh, some past invoices that the city, I think that's where the eight thousand came from. Where the E D C paid the city back that money, it was eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. And that left us with an ending balance of one hundred and forty-nine dollars, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Did I say that right? And eighty-three cents. It's been a long day.
We got you.
You got me.
Thank you.
Okay, then for the hotel motel tax accounts. We started with forty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We had a total of one thousand, four hundred and eight dollar, uh, deposits for the month. Which consisted of the Duck Inn with two hundred and twenty-six dollars and Lake Palestine Motor Inn had eleven hundred and eighty-two dollars. That gave us an ending balance of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and two cents. And I do not have the financials for April yet. Bruce's, I think he's working on those. Of course.
I would be happy to volunteer to get those together if he needs any help on that. I would be happy to put those figures together. If he's sick of messing with it, I'll do it.
Municipal report.
This can be for April. We had eighty-four new cases filed for the month. We had, uh, pre-trials in April, late April. And I think what, out of fifteen cases, four were dismissed by the prosecution. Um, she worked out a plea deal with just about everybody, um, that showed up for pre-trials. We had five appeals. Uh, they were C D L license holders, so we expected that. They appealed to the county and then we have one that, um, wants to go forward with a jury trial. Originally, we thought, um, June for jury trials, but I think we're gonna try to get in one more pre-trial to work out some deals. And then go forward because our jury pool is so small. So, um, we had our total revenue for the month was twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Um, a thousand, six hundred and ninety-six was from Pioneer. And the city gets to keep about seventy-one hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Very good.
Yep.
Police report. This will be for the month of April. I had two accidents, agency assists was seven, arrests was two, assaults were two, burglaries were two. Callouts were six. We had one dead, one suspicious person. That brings the total up to twenty-three for the month. Also, would like to add that, uh, we're trying, uh, to, we're talking to some people right now. We're trying to get a boat for the lake donated to us, so that way we can also, uh, we have several, several miles of coastline. That it's summertime and we think that we, we need, uh, some patrol out there on the water as well as on the land also. So we're, we're, uh, trying to get a boat now through donations. And I just thought I would, uh, tell y'all about that, let y'all know that we're trying to keep people safe on the water as well as on the land too around, uh, Coffee City.
Chief?
Yeah.
Can I ask, I'm looking through the, the officer's activities reports. I see several this last April where we had possession of drugs.
Yes.
What happens when we, do we arrest those people instantly or?
Uh, yes, or most of the time, yes.
Do we keep their vehicle?
Uh, do we keep the vehicle?
Yeah.
A lot of times what, what happens is, uh, if we catch them with drugs on themselves or whatever, no, we don't keep the vehicle. What happens is there's a lengthy process that we have to go through to be able to keep the vehicle. And a lot of times these people that are driving these vehicles, they're, they're, they're junk and we just.
Okay. I did, I asked that question 'cause when I lived in Farms Ranch years ago, the police had Ferraris and Corvettes and it was amazing you'd see them pull up with what they, what they would keep.
Yes, sir. Uh, like I say, a lot of times it's, you know, the, we tow the vehicles or we, uh, turn them back over to a relative or, or whatever the case may be for that particular incident.
Okay. I also, uh, read in the paper that you're targeting signal people?
Do, I'm what?
Targeting the, the people with, uh, signal violations, not putting the signals on?
Turn signal violation.
Turn signal violation. Looking through, looking through the whole month, you had one traffic ticket before, for that. So I, you know, you better quit targeting those kind of people, okay? To make it stories that can go around.
Mayor, we're talking about the boat, is there a city taking on any additional liability on that?
I have a question about that as well.
Have to approve that.
As far as, uh, the boat, are we talking like jet skis?
No. We're talking, uh, from what it looks like, it, it, it looks, um, li, like a, like an old, uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife boat, but it's, it's, it's new. It's not, it's not old, I don't believe, but it, it's a, like, like, it's the same look.
Well, are you gonna rearrange your, what your reserves are doing now, because, see, they're not gonna do it at night, right? Or are they?
Uh, that would, that would depend, uh, like, uh, whether it was a, a rescue or, or, you know, something of that, that nature. But most of the, most of the time it would, uh, be in the daytime instead when a lot of people were out.
I just feel like the, the voting thing is, um, Parks and Wildlife covers pretty good. And I, I feel like we're pretty, that, spread pretty thinly with our police department covering what we've got. And then to extend out on the water, I don't.
Well, you did your budget, chief, did you, was this before the, the boat idea and the donation, when you did your budget?
Yes. Well.
Yeah, 'cause boat, boat is expensive. It's all water, it's all money and.
I've got boats, they never hit the water.
Yeah. Well, like I say, this is, this was just, uh, we, I haven't talked to anybody about this, but we were trying to get something donated or, or whatever. But the jet skis, it didn't cost a, a whole lot or anything and.
We did, we did have some experiences with jet skis several years ago.
Yes.
And, you know, it's not just the cost of the boat, it's the life jackets, it's the, all the other things that took to go with it that, that made them pretty expensive, so. It's just something to keep in mind. Obviously, we, we would pass a council and have a group.
We're gonna make a presentation towards part of the movement and risk costs.
You, actually, you need to present us something at the next meeting.
Okay.
Before we finalize the budget.
Okay.
Agreed?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, Fire Department. Fire report.
You got three minutes.
You better hurry with that.
Real briefly, we did, uh, about twenty-seven calls. Our average is twenty. Now, that was averaging through the months. What we've been doing is averaging like November versus November versus November, you know what I'm saying? But we're gonna look at how we're, we're taking care of that. Two house fires, four grass fires. Two house fires, four grass fires, eleven medicals, two trees, two boat calls, one smoking odor, couple ricks. Now, one public service, uh, we, we unlocked one car in one house. Main thing I wanted to get to here was, uh, at the last meeting on Monday, I think it was, it was up to seven, uh, then we did, uh, we did the ISO test the very next night. We were supposed to float two-hundred-and-fifty gallons, uh, I think it was in Port, in New York. Yeah, we used, uh, Berryville, Branson Point, it was New York, West Side, Moore Station, New Day, everybody that would normally, uh, mutilate us anyway, or we mutilate, we didn't go past, uh, our area. So we flew like three-hundred-and-eighty gallons a minute. I gave a brief synopsis in there, 'cause I wanna look at it. Only thing I did wanna say is that New York River tankers are a beast. It holds thirty-five-hundred gallons, it fills up in about four minutes by itself, so. Past training, we just finished ISO safety officer class, uh, we just figured driver simulator, um, upcoming, we're starting to prepare for Berryville's ISO, which will help out, 'cause they helped us. The conference, the annual conference is, uh, sixth June through eleventh June. I think our meeting falls on the ninth. I'll try to have some right here. And then now we're gonna start a, we've done the driver simulators, and we've done the safety officer class, safety officer encompasses all calls, but now we're gonna start doing the, where we run all the cones and stuff, you know, so we're constantly moving forward on the training part. That's about it.
All right, appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move into executive session. It's lovely to stand here, we're gonna go into my office for our executive session. Going, going in there. Looking at the camera in there, how tight's that, pretty?
Oh, no, it's not.
Meeting three, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I didn't have to say no again, that's what I do.